All right. So, of course, this section will be about student reception to the New York State cellphone policy updates in this district. This has been a topic that me and Cal have been working on for quite a while now, and I'm excited to have it completed and ready to present. And I'll just move right along here. So, when I approached this project, I wanted to utilize surveys, get the feedback that I believed we needed from them. And to do this, we had two surveys that were sent out, one of which was district issued. This was sent to the middle school and to the high school, students of all grades in those schools. And these, this survey in the middle school had a response rate of about 81 percent, and the high school had about a response rate of 70 percent. A personally constructed survey that I created that I sent out to social studies classes, history classes, in all four grades of the high school was also sent. This was spread across classes of all four grades. I wanted to make sure I had perspective of the freshmen, the sophomores, the juniors, and the seniors. And this had a total response amount of 125. So, my ultimate goal with this presentation is to bring to you, the Board of Education, what impacts this year's cellphone policies have had on students throughout the district schools. Now, moving into the first survey, this is the middle school and high school one. This is very general. It only had a couple questions which were drawn from it that were related to cellphone use. So, these will be a little bit more simplistic. With the middle school responses, I had about a 65 percent percentage of the students who were less distracted by their cellphones throughout the school day. And about 56 percent of middle schoolers who responded reported that they had their daily posit, their day positively impacted by the change in the cellphone policy. In the high school, I had a 54 percent of responders who were less distracted by their cellphones compared to previous years, and a 33 percent responders who had their day positively impacted. Now, I can't tell you how to interpret these numbers. I have my own opinions. Please have your own. But some takeaways from this, I believe that an important statistic listed is the amount of distraction. This survey provides one percentage, and this is leading into the next point, which is a need for specification. A need for more specific way to learn how students feel is needed, hence Survey Two. And with the positive impact numbers, these are quite low, but when it comes to understanding perspective and the viewpoints of the students in this situation, this is a major privilege that is being taken away from them, and I don't think you can expect positive feedback, per se, from this kind of change. Now, moving into Survey Two, the goal of this survey is to narrow down the generalizations that Survey One represented. And I've specifically designed this to have an emphasis on distraction amounts within the schools. This was given to just the high school. And in Survey Two, you'll see me refer to class time as educational time or instructional time. This is all the same thing. It's all interchangeable. And this is just referring to a time where a teacher is teaching, or there is work that is assigned for that scheduled class time. Now, with this first graph, it was about when cellphones are used, when students notice that cellphones are used. And I had 49 percent of responders who only see use of cellphones during free periods, free periods meaning lunch, study hall, or non-educational time periods. 30 percent of responders see use of cellphones during educational time in addition to free time. And this is where I had to raise some eyebrows. And 22 percent of responders observe no usage at all. Now, in the second pie chart, I have cellphone distraction. And with this, 90 percent of responders experience very little to no distraction from their own and other cellphones during educational time. And I think that this is possibly the greatest win that we can take away from this, because the fact that these students are not being distracted is a great goal to have accomplished. 8 percent of responders are moderately distracted, and the remaining 2 percent claim to be strongly distracted by the use of other cellphones around them. Now, when it comes to the high school experience as a whole, I had a series of open-ended responses which went along with this. I'll get into those later. 48 percent of responders report no real change in their high school experiences without cellphones. 38 percent report a worsened experience, and 14 percent report an improved experience. Now, regarding these open-ended questions, I wanted to discuss some of the common feedback things that we got. Many students reported better focus on their work during times where they had classwork to do, homework to do, even in free periods. And other positive changes such as encouraged socialization in times where students could otherwise be using their cellphones, as well as just a general urge to not use their cellphone, not to scroll, or do anything like that. Those were the main positive takeaways that we got. Now, negatives, lack of easy communication with parents and other close relations. That was the strongest by far that I got. Students really don't like having that immediate communication available to them. Emergency situations was another larger one. The anxiety that comes from, again, not having immediate communication in the case of an emergency is drastic. Not having any work, especially in the senior grade, was another big negative. Seniors like to leave classes, don't really bother with staying in their study halls or their lunches, because they don't have those phones to use, and they can make free periods drag generally for students. There is such thing as not having work to do, and when you don't have work to do, there isn't much you can do in that way. Lastly, independent research. Chromebook security can cause Chromebooks to be a little unreliable, blocked websites, things like that. And independent research for school assignments, for out-of-school assignments, can be a little bit tricky without cellphones, which provide no blockage or anything like that. Now, some more takeaways from Survey Number Two. Use of cellphones during educational time. Again, this is what I believe the spotlight should be shined on. This is when cellphones can truly be a distraction to both the user and the people around the user, and is therefore the most crucial time to focus on. Change in the high school experience. A large portion of responders said that there was no change in the high school experience, and I thought this is interesting. It's hard to pin why this is. I'm not sure if this is a good thing, or a bad thing, or neither. That may be worth following up on. And I also thought it was interesting, from a statistical point of view, it's the drastic difference between the responses to the distraction questions in Survey Number One and Survey Number Two. There is around 50 percent distraction in Survey Number One, but that bumped up to 90 percent in Survey Number Two. And, again, a follow-up could possibly be used to determine why there is such a drastic difference when comparing the entirety of the high school to just social studies classes. Now, some final conclusions that I'd like to take away from this. Number one is just understanding perspective of the impacted group. When it comes to this policy on students, there's a difference between theory and reality. In theory, students shouldn't even have their cellphones on their person. I think it's common knowledge that reality different from this. Are only ever communicated the theoretics. And reality is much more subjective from class to class, or teacher to teacher, and I believe that this is what causes anxiety in terms of not having their cellphones. Number two, I already touched on this. Statistics in this context can be odd. There are a lot of things that could impact possibly the outcomes of these, what students want to put into their responses, what they don't. And it's important to analyze these carefully and recognize what could be further refined. And, of course, lastly, this is a given, but my opinions are not the ultimatums. To progress this further, everyone needs to have their own opinion and take their own opinions away from this. And if we do decide to further this concept, then I look forward to hearing what other people have to think besides just me. And with that, thank you all for your time. I would love to take any questions, if there are any.
Do you think that running this survey again in the spring before school is out would give you a different perspective? Do you think students would have a different outcome at that point?
I believe that in the springtime, I'm not sure how much change in behavior would really happen compared to now. I feel like the way that students behave with their cellphones right now is pretty lenient, and I don't think that can change too dramatically in the coming months, unless there is some kind of movement that the district does to change that behavior. So, for right now, I don't think an immediate follow-up like that would be too different in terms of what it can offer statistically. And if there's nothing else, I have a Tartan Turkey Talent Show to get to. So, if there is any further concerns, please talk to my secondary representative, Caleb Feinberg. And make him feel welcome. This is his first time being here. Thank you.
Cal, we won't torture you too much like we did your dad, so. All right. So, at this time, we'll open up the first hearing and privilege of the floor. I remind everybody that we have 30 minutes set aside for the first portion of it. If anybody would like to address the board, please just approach the podium. You have five minutes to speak to us. Just give us your name and your address, please.
Well, I'm very tall here. Good evening. My name is Oscar Ramirez. I live at 35A Market Street. My wife and I, Jess, are parents of a ninth grader on the Scotia Glenville bowling team for the high school. And then, we're here tonight because of two district policies. The lack of transportation for bowling athletes, and the somewhat new attendance rule that bars students from extracurriculars if they miss any part of the school day. And those are creating unfair and unnecessary barriers for our daughter and for many families in this community. The first issue is transportation. The district is not providing a bus from the high school to the bowling alley for practices or home matches. Families are expected to handle transportation entirely on their own. In the middle of weekday afternoons, at a time when most parents are still working, the reality is that only students whose parents have flexible jobs, extra transportation, or the financial means to make this work can participate fully. That is not equal access. That is not fair. That is not equitable. No student should miss out on a school sport because their family cannot drop everything at 2:30 in the afternoon. In our case, we have three kids in three separate schools. One attends a private school 30 minutes away, another one has after-school clubs in the middle school. Jess and I both have full-time jobs. This means reorganizing our entire schedule every single day of the week, just to get our kids where they need to go. We're prepping lunches late at night, shifting work hours, and scrambling constantly. And we are one of the fortunate families. Our employers are understanding. But many families do not have that luxury. If our daughter is struggling to participate, imagine how many students cannot even If our daughter is struggling to participate, imagine how many students cannot even consider joining the team because their parents simply can't leave work. Surrounding districts still provide transportation for bowling. Scotia Glenville provided it too before COVID, and it was never reinstated. Our students are at a disadvantage through no action of their own. Now, the second issue is the district's new attendance policy. This policy states that if a student misses any part of the school day, for any reason, they are barred from participating in extracurricular activities for that day. This policy almost prevented our daughter from attending practice when Jess sent her out of study hall, simply because the district provides no transportation. The lack of a bus forced us to pull her out, and then the policy nearly punished her for it. This reveals a major flaw in the policy. Right? When the district fails to provide transportation, parents are forced to step in, but punishing the student for an action taken by the parent and caused by the district's own transportation gap is fundamentally unfair. As parents, we have the legal right to sign our child out of school. The administration does not have the legal authorities to demand a reason for that dismissal, yet that has happened to us more than once. The policy also lacks nuance. It treats missing one minute of school from a late morning bus the same as skipping a core academic class. It treats a parent-approved signing out of a non-academic study hall as if the student cut class. And while seniors are allowed to leave the school and participate in sports, younger students like our daughter are held to a different standard. That inconsistency alone makes the rule unfair. Right now, parents who adjust their entire work schedules to support their kids are met with penalties, not support. Students are being punished not because they misbehave, but because the system itself is flawed. I've lived here for six years, and I've paid taxes that fund this district. I pay taxes in two different districts because of the way the land is worked. I recently voted yes on the school budget because transportation was identified as a critical area of need, but it is really frustrating to support that increase only to be told that my own child still cannot access transportation for her school sport, and then is at risk of being punished because we stepped in to cover a gap the district created. In my professional role, I serve the veterans of this county. That's my responsibility. In your role, your responsibility is to serve the students of this district. Ensuring equitable access to the athletics is part of that responsibility. So tonight, we're asking the board for two things. First, reinstate the transportation for the bowling team for practices and home matches. And second, revise the attendance policy to ensure that students are not being punished for parent-approved dismissals, or for circumstances caused by the district's own lack of transportation. Like I said, the season is already underway. Their first home game is literally next week. Families need clarity, support, and fairness now. So thank you for listening. We're not asking for anything excessive. We're just asking for equal access, consistency, and a system that does not punish students for the reality of their parents' work schedules, or for the gaps in the district's own policies. So this is a fixable problem. We're just asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. A quick question. Your statement that you would email us in the comments. So we have that. I know we've emailed back and forth, which I appreciate, but seeing that, we can do that, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hoffman. I'm the Scotia Glenville Teachers Association President, and I teach at the high school. I wanted to just take a minute, thank the board for asking for teacher input and staff input into the closing of a school, and to what's going to happen and what this all looks like. I also wanted to make you aware that a survey was sent out to all staff, asking for them to give feedback, give information about the K-235 and the closing of a building. The survey is not really accessible if you are a staff person. It is really only accessible if you are a parent. I know, because I took it, and I tried, I did my best to get through it, and I was hit with roadblocks all the way, or you have to pretend like you're a parent and lie on it, and pick a grade level in order to be able to progress through the survey. I don't know what people chose to do. Some people may have chosen to just pick a grade level so they could keep going through the survey, which is going to skew any kind of data that you got. The survey was not geared towards staff or collecting staff feedback. It was definitely a parent survey, and I guess I would just ask that maybe one could be sent out that is geared towards staff, where we are actually looking at getting staff feedback. The second thing is that a Monday meeting was held with staff, and elementary groups were broken into groups to give feedback. I would, I guess my hope is that you guys will request all of the feedback that was provided at those meetings. Staff were able to give pros of all the different plans and cons of all the different plans, and then there were like parking lot situations where they're just things that we have to consider, things that are nuances to specific buildings, and those are really important. When you look at that list of things in that parking lot, those are huge considerations. And I just think the board should be working with full and complete information, and not a summary sheet that somebody else decided what belongs on it. I think you should have all the information, all of the minutes from those meetings, because staff really took a lot of time, and they were so appreciative that you guys were asking, that people wanted to know what they thought, and I just think it would be great if you guys had access to all of the minutes from that, because there are things that don't come up on a pro sheet that are important for you to know. The last thing I just wanted, and please keep asking us. We want to be a part of this process with you. We want this to be collaborative. We know that there are hard decisions down the road for you guys to make, and we would like to be at the table with you and not against you. We want to be doing this together, union and Board of Education. The last thing, I brought you a pamphlet tonight. It's really just for you to have information if you have questions. NICE's Legal Counsel created it, and I just thought that it would be helpful for you guys to each have a copy, so if you don't mind, I'll just, you guys can take one and pass them around.
Hi, so I'm Jessica Ramirez. I'm the one that was emailing you before about the school district, so I also live at thirty-five A with Oscar. I don't want to completely reiterate everything he just said. I just want to give you a few extra viewpoints. So Oscar's lived here for about six years. I'm new to the school district. My children and I moved here over the summer from North Colony. It was definitely a big difference moving from North Colony to Scotia Glenville. It's much smaller, and I understand that there's not the same things that are benefit at North Colony. My daughter has been on the bowling team in North Colony since eighth grade. She made the varsity team. She was very excited. She tried out here, and I was very supportive until I realized that there was no transportation. I've been a single mom for over ten years, and it wasn't until now that I've had assistance with anything. And working full-time, I'm an attorney for the state. I have specific job requirements. I have meetings that I have to make, and somehow having to move my schedule to accommodate this is not easy. Not everyone has support of grandparents, spouses, and it really makes me feel for some of the other single parents that might be in the district. If your kids can't participate because you're working full-time, that is inequality and injustice in our school districts. One of the biggest things that we pride ourselves on in my job with the New York State Department of Health is equality and equity for all New York State in healthcare, but I feel like we're not getting that on the educational level, and my daughter almost missed out because I wasn't sure how to maneuver my work schedule to get her to bowling. It might only be a ten-minute drive, but I also work in downtown Albany, so it's not always easy to figure out how to do this. On top of that, I have a standing two o'clock meeting that is with some really high people up in the department, so I needed to get her before my meeting. She has a ninth-period study hall, so I said, well, I want to make sure I can get to this meeting, but I want to make sure you get to bowling. I'm going to give you a note, you're going to come out of study hall, and I will bring you. I didn't know that when she got to bowling, they almost didn't let her practice because I excused her, my child, from a study hall, and she is a straight-A student. So I really think that there needs to be some changes in this attendance policy. She wasn't skipping school, all her grades are up. If she has a ninth-period study hall, a parent should be able to get them out so that they can actually get them to practice if we have no other ways of transporting our children. So I really think this is something, this is really impacting my family. It is extremely stressful, and I can't even imagine that it's not affecting any other of our students here. And I know this isn't the only sport as well, so I want to make sure this is said for all of the sports. But I just really think this is putting us parents at a really big disadvantage, and if this continues next year, I don't know if I can let her continue bowling, and she's bowling over a two-hundred right now. So the team needs her, but I don't know if we'll be able to make this work next year. So I hope you guys think about this and hopefully come together to make a change. Thank you.
The board at this time. I'll close the first hearing. Privilege of the floor. Remind everybody that we will have a second one towards the end of our meeting. At this time, what we can do, we can talk about, since Mrs. Furnish does have to leave here momentarily, if the board is in agreement, we can have a motion to change the agenda around and leave our presentation and superintendent's comments after our votes, so that way we can get through items seven through, let's say, eleven before Kim has to leave, if we would like to do that.
I would like to make a motion to hold the presentation and the superintendent's comments to the end, so we can work on seven through thirteen, or no, seven through ten, eleven, to vote on first.
Okay. All right, Kim, thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, both of you, all in favor?
And thank you. Hi.
Hi. Anyone opposed to that, abstaining? All right. Sorry, guys, you guys hang out a little longer for us tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, so we'll move through these. We'll move to number seven. If I can get a motion, please, and a second on item number seven.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of deposit college board rebate check and relocated to Counselor Lisa Williams for honor area of advanced placement coordinator work.
Thank you. A second.
I'll second.
Okay. Questions, comments on this? If not, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Both abstaining, so moved. If I can get a motion, a second, please, for item number eight, the MOA between the Scotia Global School District and the Secretarial Association.
I'll move to approve the memorandum of agreement binding between the Scotia Glenville School District and the Scotia Glenville Secretarial Association regarding the modification in work schedule for Francesca Cowdery.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
Thanks, Jim. Comments, questions on this? If not, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? So moved. Motion, a second, please, on communication and report of the superintendent.
A motion to move communications A and B, staffing one and two, and then six through thirteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry. And then placement with children with disabilities.
All right, thanks, Kim. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you both. Questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? So moved. Go on to routine business. Any questions or comments on any of the internal claim auditor report warrants or warrant report exemptions? Okay. Any questions on the treasure report, October 2025? All right, and then if I could have a motion, a second, please, on the minutes of September twenty-second, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-second, 2025, as submitted.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
Thank you both. Questions, comments, anybody? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, so moved. Thank you, everyone, for changing that around.
Yes, thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you.
All right, so, all right, so now we'll move on to our presentation. Jack's waited patiently back there for us, so we'll turn it over to you there, sir.
Mr. Eddie O. and Mr. Cooper?
Mr. Cooper.
Good evening. Quick update on the lead and pipes. This isn't something new to us. We've been ten, twelve years changing faucets throughout the district. I believe there's over two-hundred-and-fifty faucets that have been changed in the last ten years, and currently, I think there's thirty scheduled for part of this capital project. We just got our results that, since the last time we had tests taken, it went from fifteen parts per billion of lead to five, and we've been fighting fifteen parts per billion for the last ten years. Now it's down to five, and to only have thirty-eight fixtures come back with traces of lead, half of those roughly are either kitchen faucets or in the home ec or, what do you call those? Home ec rooms? They're in those rooms, and each area in each school has more than one other faucet to be able to obtain water from for cooking or drinking. All the ones that have come back, the thirty-eight, have been marked with labels, not to drink from, not to use for cooking, and seventeen of them are in the process, especially the kitchen faucets and the home ec faucets are being changed. We're working with Tri Valley Plumbing. Dave Proll's been out to look at the faucets to get the similar in kind that are lead-free, and to change those faucets, I would say relatively soon. It was also brought to our attention, and I believe there's $10,000 per building available to change the faucets when this reduction in parts per billion came into effect. That's something we're going to be looking at, but a lot of our problem is not just replacing faucets, it's finding faucets that fit, the fixtures that are fifty, sixty, seventy years old, and some of these sinks, some of these old porcelain sinks. Finding fixtures has not been an easy task. So we're working with SEI and their engineers, Engineered Solutions, in finding fixtures, and I believe with the $10,000 per building, we'll get a lot of them done per building, and I believe we have thirty more still to do in the capital project. Did I miss anything? Oh, Christine, who's home having dinner, watching us, she did a fantastic job in compiling all this information. It was a, you know, it's been an effort, two-hundred-and-fifty faucets. So actually, we have lists of where they were changed, and we have the previous reports going back from 2016, and we changed from those results in the 2018 project, and then the next one in the 21, and now the 2425 project. So this has been ongoing since I've been here, and I'm sure the next test, you're going to find more faucets, and they're going to have to be changed, too. The drinking fountains, the bubblers were deactivated because they all use, the kids all use the fill on it, and they're still in all good work in order. Any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you, guys. Connect.
Coop, you're awesome.
All right, at this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Schwartz for her comments.
And I'm going to cede the floor to you folks for your discussion on goals.
All right, so at the last meeting, we had talked about goals, the one that we all agreed mostly on most of them, but the number one was the, Chad, if I'm wrong, correct me, please, the budget calendar.
Yeah, number one was Kimberly with the budget calendar, then we had retention from Carjeet and then communications, what we were discussing last time.
Okay. Is there any addition to those from the doc that was created, edited a few times?
I think all we really did was took a bullet out of communications, dropped it down in retention where it would be more appropriate, and then so Michael with his, he had really great ideas with students getting, they're more engaged with what we do. We took a bullet out of his, dropped it into communications, and redid some of the verbiage. Kimberly's was solid. Kimberly's was solid. She edited a date, I believe, just as things pushed past her initial date. So that was really it. The spirit is intact.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions about that or comments on those?
Do you want to move them and accept them?
Yep, yeah. So if there's no comments or we're all in agreement, so at this time, I'll take a motion to approve the board goals for '25, '26.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Education goals for 2025, 2026.
Thank you. A second.
I'll second.
Thank you. No further communications. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So those will now be moved. They'll be tightened up, and they'll be put on our website and then on the board page as well. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and Chad, for doing that work behind the scenes there. Thank you. Anything else, Susan?
Just want to compliment our student, Julian Percenti, who scored big at states in swimming this past weekend. And we will look forward to honoring her and our tennis team in early December.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Yeah, it's great.
All right, moving on to other business. There was some communication with the board this past couple of weeks, and since our last big group meeting for the ROS, that there was a lot of different levels of feedback through the community and on some social media outlets out there where people get their news from, that we've made our decision already, so we figured we would have a conversation about it. We know we have the big group meeting on the third and then our first forum on the 11th. We were a little late tonight coming out. We were chatting about that amongst a couple of other things. And we feel it's important that the community understands, the teachers, the staff, everybody, that the board has not made a decision. I know one of the comments is that we were all being swayed or told what to do, to which I responded, you clearly don't know us. That is not true. We are not being swayed. We are not having secret notes from Mrs. Schwartz or Mr. Arquette sent to us that we need to do this or that. The seven of us have our own opinions on what should be done. Some of us look at different facts, and we dig into different things, but we need to make sure the community, as the holidays approach, and there might be some stress going on. We have not made a decision. This is not an easy decision. The committees that are out there are doing a great job, and we appreciate that. And I know most of us read all the minutes of all the committee meetings that we get, and they're doing great work behind the scenes for us. And that's the goal of those committees, is to do that, to bring that data to us, and then we can make those decisions. So, and I know we have a great representation here in the back corner. There are no decisions that have been made yet. That will be all public. There is not back room behind the door. There's nothing that's done, regardless of personal feelings or anything. This will be, hopefully, data-driven, and we're going to see what's the best for the community, the staff, and everybody, and most importantly, the kids in Scotia Glenville. So on that, I'll get off my soapbox now, and one other feedback and what else we're going to chat about with this tonight in preparation for next week, because I know it was put on here, because I know we had all wanted to chat about it.
I just want to bring up one thing. As I read the minutes, especially with student transitions, I see PTAs keep getting brought up. And it's something that we briefly chatted about at council. I went out to Scotia Rotary. They tend to leave, want to help financially on that, understanding that a lot of PTAs, their budgets are set, so it's going to be really hard to find wiggle. And then also Glenville are also interested and want to hear more. So whenever they're ready to please come to the PTAs that we're willing to help, we want to help, it's just be included, because it'd be really tough to add something in later in the year.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else on this topic? All right, so we'll look forward to next week's presentation. Any other business?
I just want to mention, I have become aware that the union that represents referees who referee our high school sports primarily had, over the summer, worked together and adopted an increase in pay and a new contract. And although all of the different sports were represented, there appears to have been some confusion with ice hockey. And so right now, there is a little concern throughout the capital region that we may not have referees for our ice hockey teams. But no one may have referees for their high school teams. In a meeting I attended today with all of our regional superintendents, most of our ADs and assorted other people, Section 2 is looking at how they can make that happen if in fact there's, we come up against it. And the two schools that start playing in early December have secured their referees, so I don't really think there's going to be a problem, but I just want folks to be aware that there's this noise out in the world about referees for ice hockey. So if something changes, I'll let you know, but we do believe that we'll get it self-worked out.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any other business?
Yeah, it might be better suited for Susan or Marcy. Are there other sports that don't have transportation? I'm assuming ice hockey doesn't. I'm assuming that swimming does not have transportation.
Golf doesn't.
Golf does not either?
Correct.
I believe girls wrestling as well, too, unless that got changed.
I believe you are correct. Not to practices, to events, to competitions.
Gotcha.
I can certainly reach out to Drew and Clara and make sure I have the list correct.
Is it in the budget to put a bowling alley in?
I'm sorry?
Is it in the budget to put a bowling alley in?
To put a bowling alley in? Not that I'm aware of.
Cal, how we doing so far? Your first meeting, things good?
Pretty good. Pretty.
He's still awake, so it should be okay.
Dad's going to grill you when you get home, so.
I'll make something up.
Good man.
All right, at this time, I will open up the second hearing. Privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to address the board, we have 30 minutes set aside. Please just state your name, address, and then here go our five-minute policy, please.
That is like my goal height. Okay. Hi, my name is Megan Gilligan. I am the Vice President of Elementary for Scotia Glenville Central Schools District Teachers Association. That was a lot. I also teach first grade at Sacandaga. I'm just here to reiterate kind of what Sarah was kind of saying, but as someone who was part of those meetings, to kind of give a little insight. So after you had made that decision about repurposing the school, we met together as a K-5 staff. We broke up into smaller groups. We had a moderator. We were kind of broken up by last name, which worked for most groups, where you're kind of with a different set of people. We listened to each other. We talked to each other. We came up with pros, drawbacks, and then that good old parking lot for everybody, where that's where I feel like the most information was, because it is the stuff we don't know yet. And stuff that from the experts, like people who teach the library, the reading teachers, the people who have specialized jobs, where I rely on them for information, gave a lot of insight. So we're hoping that you can access those minutes, look at them. As Sarah said, all we kept hearing is part of the conversation, which we love, because it tells you that you want us to be part of this. And that's all we've kind of wanted. And what's hard is we hear that ticking time behind us, that we are reaching December teaching first grade. I can tell you exactly how many days till Christmas around. But it's hard to make these decisions, and we get it, but we also have the opportunity to help our community, help these kids, and we have the opportunity to do something really well. So we're hoping that we can get the ball moving on some of these things with informed decisions and information to make sure that we are hearing our community members, our staff. And in the end, it's all about those munchkins, those kids that we see. Not munchkins when you get taller, you're still part of our hearts, don't worry. But to make sure that we, as a community, are helping each other and focused on these transitions and making sure that those kids are taken care of, those parents and families are taken care of, and that we're focusing on taking care of our staff as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Marlin. I live at 506 Mohawk Ave. The December 11th meeting isn't on the Reimagining School website. If we could get that put on there, that'd be great. The December 3rd is there, the December 11th is not. Thanks. That was the easiest I've ever been. I know, I know, I know. Put the date on there.
Great, thanks, Amy. Thank you very much.
I think it's the only time you've ever clapped for me, haven't you?
That's not true. All right, nothing else, I'll close the second hearing. And privilege of the floor, and at this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
A second. Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it, especially Amy. Thank you.[1773.87]